Good morning, I'm Cynthia Toles, President of the Gaston City Council. And we're conducting today's work session via teleconference. This meeting is being broadcast on Facebook live and will be available on channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. As a reminder, our work session gives the council an opportunity to review items on today's agenda, as well as any ordinances and resolutions that have been routed from the council's consideration. This meeting are informal and no actions are taken. At 11 o'clock meeting, we'll have updates from EMA Director and the Fire Chief. But before we proceed, I would just like for us to take this time and this opportunity, there was a news article, and I will elaborate on that concerning Gaston says goodbye to former Mayor David Nolan. David Nolan passed away on Friday. He was the mayor who ushered in the current form of government in 1986, and he was elected the first mayor to serve with a seven-member city council. He was 81 years old when he passed away. He ran, he retired from the Goodyear tied rubber company, and he purchased Fettum's windows and doors which became Nolan Glass, and I was a customer of his also. Just wanted to let the public know, as well as the council know, that the family have our sympathy. He was an excellent mayor. He did a lot of things during that time when it became a mayor council, form of government. He was instrumental in implementing the automated garbage service and to be the heart and center for the cultural arts at its location in the heart of downtown Gaston instead of, I think at one time they were wanting to use the old Eleven Street School building, which is now the Gaston City Board of Education. So we just want to let the family know that they have our sympathy, they have our prayers, and we will constantly be grateful for the legacy that David Nolan left the city of Gaston. So at this time, we will look at our agenda items for today. We have one item of unfinished business, and that is Item 9A is an ordinance approving the American Rescue Plan Fund Budget that was presented last week for first reading. We have Item 10 is a public hearing and first reading regarding an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2022 budget. Items 11 through 13 are public hearings regarding the resolution, and I went ahead for what I was doing is doing the pre-council, so I'll just go back. If you get out your agenda for today, we'll just look at our agenda for today. I've already did the first two. So Item number 11 would be a public hearing as a resolution on an abatement of nuisance, and this is at 313 Brady Street, and that's the State of Alabama right of redemption of Howard Nelson and Tristan Nelson, if deceased their heirs, Telian Wilson. We have a public hearing, this is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance in District 6, and the other one was in District 6 also, and this is 5 Marston Avenue, Juan Diego Ray, Jay and Mr. Holcomb. Item 13 is a public hearing, this is a resolution authoring abatement of nuisance in District 6, 511 Wilson Street. State of Alabama subject to the right of redemptions of Evelyn McQuarter and her heirs are, if deceased. We have Item 14 is a resolution authorizing a lease agreement with the Mental Health of America, Edgewark County and the Gaston Public Library. We have a resolution authorizing a permit agreement with Alabama Department of Transportation. This has to do with the traffic signals maintenance. Item 16 is a resolution authorizing permit terms or conditions with the Alabama Power Company Riverwalk at Cousteau Landing. Our next item, which Item 17, is authorized agreement with Rafa House. This is city inmates. We have a resolution amending job classification and amending resolution number R-4304 and We have a citizen request, and this is Kevin Blackwell from Span, from the Span program. So at this time, we'll go back and look at our pre-council folder. We have Item of unfinished business is an ordinance approving the American Rescue Plan Fund Budget that was presented last week for first reading. Any discussions on that? We have Item 10 is a public hearing and a first reading regarding an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2022 budget, and I believe two weeks ago, every individual council person was going over with this budget with the Finance Director, but we will have a public hearing, and this is just the first reading of the budget. So it's not something that you don't know anything about, you are aware of it, but this is a public hearing will be our first reading for it, but we won't vote on it today at all. Number 11.
Council President. Since everyone's had this, since everyone's had this for two weeks, it would probably help the payroll department, everything after the public hearing, if we could vote on this so that the guys can go ahead and get all their money that they deserve, the raises and the other money we're supposed to give them at $3,000 and that $1,500, it would probably help the Finance Department.
Well, Item number 10 is the fiscal budget for the city, so that has to do a public hearing, and that's first reading, so we can't bring that up today. We have to do a public hearing on that one. Am I correct, Ms. Alva?
If you considered it the ordinance today, you would need unanimous consent to do so, but you would conduct the hearing regardless of whether the council considers it today or not.
We would have the hearing, then I would make a motion for unanimous consent to go ahead and get this over with. Like you say, everybody's looked at this, they had ample opportunity, and I hadn't heard from anybody else in the last two weeks about trying to make any changes, so I guess everybody's on board and to go with it, and that's why I was trying to help the Finance Department get these guys their money.
Okay, I believe you are, I believe you are talking about the American Rescue Fund Budget, which is what we will vote on, what we will vote on today. The other budget has to do with the adoption of the city's regular budget, and that's the one that's first reading for today, and then we will consider it for next, for next week.
Why can't we consider that today after the first reading of it today, the hearing? If I ask for unanimous consent?
Well, because I want to be transparent, and I don't want to try to put nothing over on anybody. We try to do anything that's underhanded and follow the right procedures, and that's the parliamentary procedure, is that Item 10 says it's a public hearing and a first reading regarding an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2022 budget, but we can vote on Item number A, which is approving the rescue plan budget, which would give the workers the money that you're talking about.
Okay, I'm talking about the money also in the city budget, that's what gives employees some money too. All of us not coming out of the rescue money. Some of us come out of that too, and if we're not going to let this come up today, I'll be here in this position probably for 14 months, 15 months to when my term ends up. I want you to go ahead and take, for my part, take new business off of the agenda, because I'm not going to let any new business never again come up if we can't do something like this to help the employees. All we're doing is giving the employees a slap in the face right here by not going ahead and approving the budget and getting their money.
Councilman Cannon, I'm not real sure where this is coming from, but I don't, it's surprising to me, but we're following the rules. The rules state if anybody didn't get the city employees their money fast enough, it was the people responsible for putting this budget forth. Nobody, it's not like it's a surprise that the parliamentary procedure is to read it once and then vote on it the next week. That's the way it's supposed to be done. So if anybody's responsible for shortening the citizens their money, it's the people who didn't bring this proposal to us until now. I don't think there's any justification for a $54 million budget for us to rush it through and pass it without, without following the proper procedure. And again, I don't know where this is coming from, because I've heard multiple objections from the community about items in this budget. I've heard multiple questions, not even objections, people asking questions because they don't understand the process, they don't understand how we do it, and it, and it comes across as us just doing whatever we want and shoving it down their throat. And I think, I don't think it's fair to, I think that's a fair criticism. Nobody's saying that something illegal or inappropriate is happening in the budget. I just think that people are crying out for better communication between this council and the Office of the Mayor and the citizens, and doing stuff like this in immediate consideration just stokes that fire, and I can't help but feel like it comes from a place of spite. It's a spitefulness in this community, and I just don't understand it, man. I don't understand the hills that we pick to die on around here. I'm sorry, Madam President. I won't agree, I won't agree to any unanimous consent, I will not agree to any unanimous consent on hearing this budget today. And I apologize to all city employees if that in some way impacts their livelihood.
Well, the thing about it, the thing about it is, Councilman Wilson, we have city council meetings, we have city council meetings to do council business, not for the public to tell the council what to do.
Nobody's telling the council what to do, other than the code of ordinances that governs our actions. It's not the city, it's not the citizens that are saying this, it's the actual parliamentary procedure that we've all agreed to abide by, which is we have a public reading on the budget, and then we vote on it the following week, which allows for open discussion in the community. I'm not talking about any one individual demanding me this. I've done this for three years. I've said that it is bad practice for us to do immediate consideration on such large transactions. I think it's just administrative principle. We have a process. I understand there are exceptions to that, but I don't see this as an exception. We have a budget every single year. We have a budget every year. We know when the budgets come in every year.
Well, it's just, you know, and that's the reason why we have, that's the reason why we have new business, that's why we have immediate consideration, but Councilman Wilson, the budget is not new to you or any of the council members, because you've had over two weeks to go through this budget.
No ma'am, I agree with you 100%. I agree with you 100%, and I want to clarify something. Last week, when I said I didn't know anything about it, I didn't know you were going to ask for immediate consideration of it, is when I said I didn't know anything about it. Of course, I knew about the ARP budget, and it had been covered with me thoroughly. I understood it, just like this budget was covered with me thoroughly. When I said I didn't know about it, I meant I didn't know that you were going to ask for immediate consideration of it. That had never been discussed. It showed up as new business, I thought we were going to have a first reading and vote on it this week, and that's why I raised objection last week and said I didn't know that you were going to do this. I was talking about you calling for unanimous consent. I wasn't saying I didn't know the budget.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to add what I want to say to the end of this. Jason, everybody on this council has gave unanimous consent for new business. I'm not getting on anybody, I'm not talking about anybody, it's the truth. You gave unanimous consent for stuff to come up under new business that we didn't all probably look at and know all about it, so from this point on, you can either take new business off the agenda, or every time I'm here, I'm not going to let you bring any new business up. I don't care what it is. My people is as good as your people in Alabama City Wallop Park, South Gaston. They want me to be sure of everything that we vote on, and if that's going to be the case, there'll be no more new business brought up regardless, and for me anymore.
Well, Councilman Cannon, I'll take it.
That's not a threat, I'm just telling you.
Councilman Cannon, and I'm just telling you, first of all, you called me Jason. That makes it a full clean sweep of everybody on this council that calls me Jason on a regular basis, and I don't, I think that maybe tells you something about how I'm treated on this council. Second of all, you threatening me with not letting me bring up any new business means nothing to me, Councilman Cannon. Go back and look, y'all never let me bring up a new business one time, not once, not one single thing have I brought up. The only way my past resolution passed is when you brought it back up, because they refused to let me bring it up. So you telling me there's going to be no new business. This is what you guys, this is what you create when you make those ultimatums to me, Councilman Cannon, because you've never, y'all never let me bring up anything anyway. And I'm sorry, I'm not going to be made feel bad, because I bet you if you talk to your constituents in Alabama City, they would tell you they want you to follow the rules. And that's all I'm trying to say, is let's follow the rules. And I'm sorry, and I'm a bad guy for that, if I'm getting in the way of the machine because of that, I'm sorry, but all I'm asking for is that we follow the rules.
That's what I want to follow the rules from this point on, under any new business. If the department heads can't get their stuff here in time for us to look at, it has to be a quick vote, we say no. And I expect for you, since you're saying you don't want any of this to come up today, I'm expecting you, when I'm not here, any new business to come up. You vote no not to let it come up. I'm asking you, Councilman Wilson, to do that for me.
I'll agree to that.
And I'm sorry if I called you by your name, people up here can call me whatever they want to. I don't have a title, I don't care nothing about titles, so you can call me whatever you want to.
Madam President. To be honest with you, Councilman Cannon, I don't care, and it doesn't bother me that people call me Jason. I'm actually kind of flattered by it. I like the fact that people feel comfortable enough to call me by my first name, but I've seen members of this body time and time again correct people for not using their appointed title within the confines of these meetings, and so I just think, I just was pointing it out in the context of what I was trying to say about, I'm, I'm sorry if I'm rocking the boat here, but I'm just trying to do things the right way, and I can get, you criticize for that all you want to, but I was just trying to do, do things the right way and rebuild the relationship between this governing body and our citizens, and I think that's a good start.
Well, don't you think it'd be a good start?
I just want to say, we as the city council know about the budget, but the public doesn't. What's wrong with giving them a week to look at it before we vote on it? We don't have to rush it through. The money is, it doesn't go in until October 1st anyway, so it's not going to hurt the employees by waiting another week at all. And it's going to give the people time to look at the budget. Whether they agree with it or not, we the ones have to vote on it. There's plenty in it I don't agree with, like taking the funding from the school system. We're not giving the school one penny.
They need to give us, Councilman, where that they got over 31 million.
Hey, Doc, Doc, Doc.
They got over 30, so don't even say that.
Just like we can't do whatever we want with the federal money.
Don't even say, don't even say that about the school system.
Oh yeah, we taking money from the school system. We're not giving them a penny.
They need to give.
You think they can do what, you think they can spend that money that they got from the federal government on fine arts? No, they can't.
They are.
You need to call and talk from some of them over there. Okay, that's all I got to say about it.
All righty.
That's my own.
We are. Item number 14, because I've mentioned the other three, Item 11, 12, and 13, so Item 14 is a resolution authorizing a lease with the Mental Health of Edgewark County and this office space on the second floor of the Gaston Public Library. And I believe, I don't know if it was narrowed, Mr. Scott, I know he spoke on it last week, but you want to sort of elaborate a little bit more?
I will.
All right.
Dr. Toles, counsel, thanks. As I mentioned last week, the library's really excited to go into partnership with Mental Health America. They're a, an agency supported by United Way. Will be able to have some classes on parenting anger management here. It's a good fit for us overall.
I'm sorry, but could you forward me that anger management class information? Thanks.
Councilman Wilson, I will do that.
I'm going to butt in. Don't forward him any information, set him up a class. All righty, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So I elaborated on this last week. There was, there was a correction that needed to be done in the lease. Lee Roberts has handled that, the correction has been made, and so we're ready to move ahead, and I was asked for your approval today for this.
When will they, when will they start the program of the, you know, have they already sort of got the office space together?
Yep, and, and they, they have moved some of their things in, a couple of the classes have started, but October 1st is what we're shooting for. This, this went into effect September 1st, and it's only, only going to be for one year. I want to test this out first, and then we'll renew for five years, and I'm sure we will.
Okay. All right, sounds like a good plan, sounds like a good plan.
It's an excellent partnership, and I'm very, very glad to be able to bring this to you and support it.
Councilman Wilson, do you mind bringing that one up today?
Not at all, ma'am.
All right, thank you. The next item is.
Excuse me, excuse me, what? I don't understand this, I hear we're talking about bringing something up, and it's already under agenda, what, on the agenda? Give me kind of, I know it was out last week, I don't understand, it's already on the agenda, why would we have to bring it up? I'm sorry. I don't understand this.
Well, that's, that's right, we just had a correction, it was on the, it was this pre-council last, we was going to bring it up last week, and there was something that we had to correct on it, and so that, you're, you're correct, and so it's going to be voted on, but we just discussed, we were discussing it.
I'm not introducing it, it's.
No.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Madam President, can I ask, we've already been over all this, haven't we?
Yeah, we didn't went through all of it.
We want to do this a second time.
Yes, well, you know, we had it, we had it, but there was some corrections, or there was something that legal had to look at the contract, and so we tabled it for, uh-huh, we tabled it.
I'm talking about the agenda as a whole. We went through all this before, all we need to do is go over the other in the pre-council.
This is pre-council.
This is pre-council.
I mean, I got this in my council folder for the vote.
All this shit you're going over, we went over it about 15, 20 minutes ago.
We need to get to the pre-council folder.
We need to get to pre-council, yeah.
Does anybody else know what we're trying to say?
We went over the whole agenda, right down to Will Reed.
Okay.
And then we were, then we were supposed to go over to the pre-council, which we didn't do.
Pre-council, and your pre-council folder, I got you. We have a, okay, we have a resolution electing Director of Edgewark Gaston Healthcare Authority. The city appoints two members to the board, and this resolution reappointed Marie Franklin Johnson and Reba, Rebecca Walker. Our next item is a resolution authorizing traffic enforcement agreement, and the agreement is between the Police Department, the East Central Alabama Highway Safety Office, and the City of Opelika, and relates to grants for traffic safety enforcement. Would anyone from the Police Department like to comment? So everybody, everybody understands this particular grant that's we're, that's going to be between the Police Department and the other law enforcement officers or agreement Our next resolution authorize agreement with Midle, Midle, this is for the upgrade of telephones, hardware, and software for various departments and buildings within the city. Would anyone from MIS like to, like to make comments?
Yes, ma'am, this is Terry from MIS.
All right.
We have converted most all of our city phones over to Mitel Cloud, started about five, six years ago, and currently we've got about 270 phones that are currently Mitel Voice Over IP phones. Mitel is trying to move most of its customers over to a new product called Mitel MyCloud Connect. It offers several advantages over the old system, it's more computer integrated, so people can do things with their PCs now, it makes it easier to do conference calls, transfers, et cetera. It's an advantage to us in IT, that we're able to handle most of the problems ourselves instead of having to reach out to Mitel to take care of things for us. Then also, the reason to bring it up right now is we've got potential savings if we can get the contract signed this month. Currently, we're paying nine, at this time, $9,075 a month for these 270 phones plus service, plus maintenance. If we get it signed this month, they've agreed to give us two months free on the new service, and we would be paying roughly between $15,000 and $20,000 for the implementation configuration of all the new equipment. Everybody would get all new equipment with this as well. And then looks like monthly, I don't have an exact total, but looks like we're probably going to save somewhere $800 to $900 a month after we get to the new part of this, on what we're paying right now. So hopefully, with the two months, we'll have overlap probably on the first month for the bill for the previous service, so we should save at least one month service, which would be, you know, around $9,000, and then hopefully partial of a second month, plus saving roughly $800 to $900 a month. After that, hopefully, we would pay for the implementation and install within about a year, then after that, we should save money with it. So, but there again, the reason we need a contract signed this month to get the two months free, so.
Okay, so it's the, it's the end of this month that you'll need the contract and everything signed, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. How much will this, will this cost the city?
The install cost is the only real cost initially, and like I said, it's, they're estimating it will be probably no less than $15,000, no more than $20,000, based on the time it's going to take to configure and install these 270 phones, so. But like I said, with, with the two months waived and the lower in general, and a monthly, you know, as we go forward, it should hopefully have us cover that cost within a year or so, and then we'll save money after that.
Ms. Rossa, is that in our budget?
No ma'am, can you hear me? No ma'am, it's not actually a budgeted item, because we did not, I actually did not know about this until just this past week, but we have come up with enough of funds in the budget that we're currently in, the fiscal year 2021 budget, that we feel like we can do the installation now and not have to worry about, the actual monthly bill is budgeted in next year, and of course, as Terry has said, that bill will be going down, so there will be cost savings there. But we have the installation we feel like covered in this fiscal year that we're currently in. That's another reason we'd like to have, need this contract signed by the end of September.
All right, thank you.
36 months.
I didn't hear.
Terry, is this a 36-month term?
Yes, I believe so.
Terry, I had a, I had a question on the information I have, it's showing that the monthly charge is 75, 38, 61, and you said that our current charge is $9,075, so am I to assume that's about a $1,400 a month saving as opposed to 800 or 900?
Actually, on the quote, it doesn't include taxes and surcharges that we get, and currently, those taxes and surcharges are $872 a month, so that, that would be the difference between that. So, but we still, we still look at saving, you know, somewhere in $800 range, I believe. Those surcharges may go down based on the original bill being, you know, less expensive, so.
All right, well, thanks for explaining that.
Sure.
All right, thank you. Alright, thank you. Uh, item number four is an ordinance amending the city code section eighteen dash one B. And this is relating to rental property inspection. This was requested by the building department. Uh, Mr. Harbison, would you like to explain the ordinance?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, this ordinance, the rental ordinance is a little over thirteen years old. And, uh, what we're asking for, uh, just to give you a brief breakdown of the process. A landlord comes in to schedule a rental inspection. They'll pay a, a, a fee of fifty dollars. That includes the initial inspection. And if that, if that initial inspection fails, it includes a follow-up inspection. So the fifty dollars includes up to two inspections. Uh, the fa- the first re-inspection, which would actually be the third inspection on a rental property. If the, uh, if, if, if that one was required, the original ordinance set that fee at fifteen dollars. Uh, and thirteen years ago, we felt like that was fair. Uh, recently, we've taken on a couple of, uh, new apartment complexes. We have the Holy Conforter with a hundred and eighty-two rental units that, uh, we're in the middle, middle of, uh, of trying to get in our system and, and get back online. Uh, we have the Garden Terrace apartment, uh, units off of Litchfield Avenue in East Gaston. They have ninety-six units, uh, which we hope, uh, soon we'll begin to be bringing those back online. And whether or not you've heard this information, the Doggett Towers is up for sale and most likely will end up in private hands, which it has also been under, uh, HUD, uh, inspections over, you know, the last couple of decades. And so, uh, that's a total, and, and Doggett has a hundred units, which ninety-nine of those are, are currently occupied. So we're looking at almost four hundred apartment units, just in three complexes there. And what we deal with in these larger apartment complexes is they'll have such a turnover in management that they don't understand the inspection process. And a lot of times our inspectors are, are required to go out second, third, and even fourth time just for one apartment. That's not fair to the citizens of Gaston, in my opinion, to subsidize the, uh, the re-inspection part of that. So we're asking that that re-inspection fee be increased from the cost of fifteen dollars currently to a cost of fifty dollars. And just so that you'll know, uh, less than three percent of all of our rental units have had to call for that, uh, that re-inspection. Normally, when, when a landlord fails the inspection, whether it's the first or, or even the follow-up, it doesn't take many more inspections for everything to be in line. Uh, but, uh, what we're finding, especially with the Holy Conforter situation, is we're going back three and four times to, uh, to some of these units. And, uh, at, um, at a rate of fifteen dollars per inspection, that's just not even coming close to covering the administrative cost. And so we're asking for this to be increased from fifteen to fifty. Uh, just a very simple, uh, amendment to our existing rental ordinance, which, uh, which I'm happy to say, uh, I, I believe has gone a long way to extending the life of many of our residences in Gaston, which you all know are, uh, are reaching an average age of, of seventy-two plus years. So, um, we're asking for that. Uh, we're not asking for that today. Obviously, it's been on, on the book for thirteen years. So whenever that can, uh, make its way to the agenda, uh, in the form of a, uh, uh, if, if it needs to be in the form of public hearing, we're, we're in no great rush for that. We're just asking that the council, uh, will consider, uh, giving us, uh, that request. Thank you.
Any questions?
President, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Sure. Uh, based on personal property, I know in the city right now, some of mine, uh, they'll rent them three and four and five times and we don't even know it. Is there a better way to track them some way? Now, I know they changed the water and all this kind. Some people gonna try to beat you anyway. Is there a better way to track it so we know?
Well, right now, the best way we have of tracking is with the cooperation that we're getting from the Gaston Water Works Sewer Board.
That's true.
They will not release a new account unless they have one of our certificate of occupancies attached to it. Uh, so they help us. We help them a lot of times with folks who are illegally obtaining or stealing water. And, uh, so it works both ways. But, uh, you know, without having a, uh, an abundance of individuals out there chasing these illegal rentals. Just to be honest, we've got about fifteen hundred to two thousand rental units in Gaston that have never been entered into our system. Uh, it's a slow process, but we're trying to catch them.
I just know that on the water bill, a lot of these owners put it in their name. Is there, I know the water board, we can't, well, anyway, they can't release certain things. I'm just wondering if, if we can't get a list, if the owner lists that water in his name, he better live in it.
Well, now, they, the water department does provide us a weekly update of, uh, of all water accounts. And so you can look at that and, uh, based on the addresses that they give, we can determine whether or not that's rental.
As long as we're tracking it, that the owner is not, is actually renting it and he's not living it.
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council members? Uh, before, we, we have someone to speak, but, uh, Mrs. Gaither wanted to, uh, speak to the council. So, uh, Ms. Gaither, at this time?
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for the minute to do this. I want to remind everyone that next Wednesday, September the twenty-second, is the senior officials workshop um, that Texas A&amp;M is holding. Um, Councilman Worthing, this is the one that, um, you had requested about three years ago. So we need to get those that are coming registered. Um, it's at eight-thirty. We've moved it to the venue. Um, we thank the mayor for the permission to do that because that allows us to, um, go ahead and socially distance better than we could here in the emergency operations center. Um, it's six hours, so you should be out by three-thirty and lunch is served. So, at the end of that, um, workshop, we're going to have a document that will be a working, living document for the city and for the county for, um, guidance on, um, our planning efforts and our mutual aid agreements. And it's the first class that I've seen them teach that, um, you really come out of it with something to be useful. So I want to remind everybody that's not registered. I, I think I know that, um, Councilman Wilson and Back are both registered. So let's see if we can get a few more of you to come and join us that day. And I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Hey, I registered, uh, Ms. Gaither.
Um...
Did it not take it?
No, sir. So we'll, we'll look at that again.
Okay.
Alright. I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, several more had registered.
Okay. If, I hope you can get me who all has registered. We'll see. I know that Council, Councilman Wilson had a hard time and I ended up having to key his in. So, um...
Okay. So maybe it wasn't going through when we thought it did. Okay.
Right, right. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, there is a, uh, resolution that is not in your folder, but it's in mine that, uh, I'm going to, uh, read today. Uh, it's, uh, renaming the second floor of the art gallery at the Gaston Museum of Art. Uh, and, uh, it's a special request, uh, from me, and I know we've discussed this, but I'm gonna ask for it to be brought up today. It's the renaming of the second floor art gallery at the Gaston Museum to the Barbara Reeves, uh, uh, museum, the second floor.
I have no objections to that, Madam President. I think it's a great gesture.
Thank you very much. Uh, we now have a, uh... We now have a person who has requested to speak about the budget for the American Rescue Fund, uh, Plan Fund, uh, Robert Avery. So I guess they hooked him up to come on.
Yes, ma'am. I've asked him to be promoted to panelist, so he should be joining us shortly.
Okay, I think I'm on now. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello?
Yes.
I wasn't, I wasn't sure if you could hear me. I'm, I'm on the road right now, so let me, I'm pulling over. That was a good timing. Um, I appreciate, uh, Madam President, the council giving me an opportunity to speak to y'all. I, I'm on the road down in Mississippi, as a matter of fact, meeting with municipalities and elected officials down here talking about the American Rescue Plan. And the city has the American Rescue Plan on the agenda today. And they, um, I guess allocating, I, I didn't get a chance at, but it's my understanding that there's projects that you're gonna be funding. Uh, some of those projects are considered infrastructure. And, uh, I, I would get a call as soon as it just come on. Um, some of those projects are gonna be infrastructure projects. And I'm asking the council, but this time, uh, they want to amend that budget not to fund any infrastructure projects out of these, this funding. Um, the law is clear in that you have to twenty twenty-four allocate these funds. And we have infrastructure monies coming down the pipe that only can be spent on infrastructure. We had a public meeting, and at that public meeting, we had a number of agencies that were there who, uh, requested funding or want to request funding from this, uh, American Rescue Plan money, which is what this money is supposed to do. It was supposed to uplift the community, uplift the people within the community and, and make sure that the municipalities and the cities had the monies to do some of those projects that they've been wanting to do and, and didn't have the funds to do. Other than drainage and sewer. And, and, and of course, there are a number of those projects that are very, very important in communities to uplift those communities. So we're not saying we don't want you to do sewer. We don't, we're not saying we don't want you to do paving. But we're asking that you don't do it with these, this funding, because again, there's trillions of dollars coming down the pipe that is gonna be used for infrastructure, and that's all you can use it for. These dollars are more flexible and you can do more with it. So we're asking that, since you got it on the agenda, that if you've got some projects on that other than infrastructure, that you would go ahead and approve those and table the other portion of that monies. Because like I said, you got the twenty twenty-four to, to allocate those funds. Basically, all the government wanted you to do today, by the end of this month, was to say, we're gonna use X number of dollars to throw up in the air and we're gonna use X number of dollars to give to John and X number of dollars to give to Sam. But not a specific project. You don't have to do that now. You got plenty of time to go back in and do those type of projects. And, and so that's what we're asking. Um, I didn't realize until I, I heard today that, uh, some of the funds in there are for city employees. Um, then we would, uh, welcome that you go ahead on and do those for those emergency people, if those funds are in there. We would ask that you go ahead on and pass that portion of this, uh, uh, ordinance, but table the rest of it, if you could do that. Uh, until we can really, council members need to get out and meet with the people in their districts. We had a meeting and we had department here. I think there might have been one or two council people there. But there was no interaction between the council people and the people in the district and the community that needs these funds. Uh, we had, at our meeting, we had people who represented, uh, Pee-wee football teams, uh, cheerleading teams. We had the gardening club. Um, we had churches who have special programs, feeding programs and stuff like that. None of that was addressed at the city meeting, but because they, all they talked about was drainage and stuff like that, and I know that's important. But again, you got money coming for that. So please, ma'am, and please, sir, do not spend this money on those type projects right now. Let's take a deep breath, use this money, like you say, uh, for the, uh, enhancement of those, uh, first responders. We, we don't have a issue with that at all. That, that's a good thing. But the rest of the money, we ask that you table it and let's get a second look at how we need to spend that money and allocate those funds. And, and that's pretty much, pretty much my spiel. I'm, I'm open for, I'm open for questions. Anybody to have any questions or response I would like to hear.
Mr. Avery, I would just add, not necessarily a direct response. I mean, obviously, there's a lot of moving parts to that. Two things I would say. Number one, the, the full funding, the twenty-four million dollars, I just think it's clear, it's important to make clear, only half of those funds are actually coming to the city this year. The other half don't come until next year. So twelve million of this twenty-four million won't even be it, it available to the city until next year. That, that's one thing. So I think that it may actually be the plan, like you described, to use the initial funding for those raises and the additional police officers and the new fire response vehicles and all these things that we had identified um, with the additional twelve million coming next year, um, for drainage and sewer. Again, it's, I don't think there's any dollars out of that dedicated to paving roads. It was my understanding from the revenue department that that is exclusively gonna be used for drainage and sewer issues, which have obviously been very dramatic. And to the point, you did say that there's a lot of money coming down the pipeline. I would just tell you that Heath Williamson, the city engineer, told all of us, we could spend a hundred million dollars on drainage and sewage if we had it. Um, but this ten million dollars will go a long way to fixing the absolute worst of them. And that was the way it was explained to me by the engineering department. Um, so I just wanted to make it clear that the funding didn't all come in one lump sum. And the other thing I'll say, and I've heard this question many times over the last week, but we're giving a significant amount of money to the United Way. And the reason, as I'm sure you're aware, but the public may not be, um, we give that money to the United Way because municipalities are notoriously bad at oversight. Um, we, we have these resources and we give them to these nonprofit agencies, but we're very bad at following up and making sure that those resources are being used appropriately. Well, the, kind of a workaround to that, I think, is the United Way. The United Way funds hundreds of agencies throughout the county. It's made up of a large board of directors from individuals throughout the community. Um, and so the logic, I think, with the city giving a disproportionate amount of those charitable funds to the United Way is that some of those agencies that you described, um, can then approach the United Way and go through their process for funding. And United Way takes their nonprofits that they, that they contribute to through a training program. Uh, they make sure that there's accountability in how the funds are, are being utilized. So I think that's the logic with giving a disproportionate amount to the United Way and then directing some of these smaller or less, uh, mature, uh, nonprofits that are just coming up to maybe direct them towards the United Way so that they can get some guidance and leadership on how to get the most out of those dollars. But that's, that's my only two cents. Thank you for your comments.
Is there any other?
I, I appreciate, I, I appreciate your two cents, but let me notoriously...
Yes, sir.
United Way, notoriously, United Way do not cater to a number of community issues. What the city needs to do, I'm just a suggestion. I would hope that the city would hire someone to oversee these funds and not give it to United Way, not give it to any other agency and let the city be responsible, because the city is gonna be ultimately responsible for these funds if they're misspent. And again, uh, the... And again, uh, the United Way don't give to uh pee-wee football teams, and United Way don't give to uh cheerleading groups. United Way don't give to a number of people out there. And they, they're good, and I understand that, but we need someone who's going to get down in the community and use these funds to clear out some um areas or to shore up areas where we've been liking.
I don't disagree.
This city used to be
I don't disagree with you. I think, I think it's a good observation. I, I don't disagree at all. And the only thing I'll say is obviously, you know, having a full-time staff member to oversee that or act as an auditor for those funds is, you know this as an alumni of this body, that'd be a conversation for the mayor as far as personnel goes. Um, but in the meantime, I'll also just make it clear, we didn't just give all the money to the United Way. We also gave, gave a portion of funds to uh the Way of the Cross, a portion of the funds to uh the Salvation Army. Um, there were several other agencies that are receiving funding. It wasn't all just the United Way. And I know you knew that. I just wanted to make that clear for everybody. I mean, there are about, I would say, I think 10 or eight to 10 different agencies that are receiving funding. The United Way is just receiving a bit more than the others because they do work with so many sub-agencies um in, in the community. I agree, United Way doesn't touch every inch of this community, and there's places where it needs to, we need to fill in the gaps.
Well, I appreciate that. And if you're going to give it to an agency that contact, come in contact with more people than Community Action Agency should have been the agency. But that's another story and another discussion. Again, I appreciate it for the, um, the council to hear me. I just hope that you guys will look seriously at uh tabling part of those funds at this point in time, and so we can have another discussion and another community meeting. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to come before the council, and thank you.
Are there any other uh uh comments or questions that come before the council? Uh, I would just like to say, and I, and I know that uh Mr. Avery is alluding to a lot of the youth, there, there's a I don't know if it's a, there's something out there in the community that the youth groups or the leagues or the cheerleaders groups have the idea that the city does not want to uh help them, and that is not, that is not the case. That is not true. We cannot give funds, even from our discretionary funds, to an individual little league or a little cheerleading. If they came up under the heading of a league and that league affiliated with the city of Gaston, then we will be able to give them money uh and, and be able to support them. We support them, but we can't give money as a city to an individual entity like a cheerleading or little league or, or soccer. But anyway, uh, that's just my, that's just my comment, but that's not, that's not my opinion. Those are facts. If nothing else, we have about five minutes, and our council meeting will start, and so we'll take a break at this time. Good morning. I'm Cynthia Toles, President of the Gaston City Council. Uh, we're meeting today by teleconference, and today's council meeting is being broadcast on Facebook Live and also can be viewed later on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Ivana Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Councilman Worthy?
Here.
Councilman Back?
Here.
Councilman Wilson? Councilman Cannon?
Here.
And Councilman Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to lead the invocation. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you have blessed us with. We thank you for the privilege of coming together and working for our city and our community. We just pray that you would be with us during the meeting today, that you would just bless the actions that are taken, and that we would all seek your leadership and your guidance in deciding what's best for the citizens of Gaston and for our own personal lives. We thank you for your protection over us, and we seek your protection and your safety in the coming days. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Uh, I'd like to begin this meeting today with the update from the Emergency Management Director, Mrs. Gaither, and after which we will have an update from our own Chief Reed.
Good morning. I'm going to have Brianna to update you all today. Thank you.
All right.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We're going to start off with the, the numbers this week. Uh, so in the last seven days, we've had 302 cases. Uh, so the average for the last seven days is 43.14 uh with a positivity rate of 25.8%. And we've added two deaths in the last week to give us an overall total of 410. Uh, hospitalizations seem to have leveled off some, looking at the charts, but it's still at a critical um limit right now. Uh, the critical care units are still full. As far as vaccination numbers, uh, we have 32,567 citizens that are fully vaccinated, and that's both doses. Uh, we have 42,748 who have had at least one dose. Uh, so that gives us 31.8% of the county who are fully vaccinated, and again, that's two doses. Uh, Vaccinate Gaston, the numbers this week, um, is 156. So that's from Monday to Monday is when we take that number. I want to remind everyone who wishes to participate in the Vaccinate Gaston program um that you must have your second shot by October the 15th. I know the deadline is coming up for some. I think this week will be the last week that you can get um the Moderna shot, I think. That's 28 days between the two doses. And then your Pfizer shot, it's uh 21 days between the doses, so make sure you're keeping up with that. Um, we have a vaccination clinic coming up at the Quality of Life in Gaston. Uh, actually, two of them, so that'll be next Monday from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and also next Saturday, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And you can call this number to schedule an appointment. That's 256-439-6404. Again, that's 256-439-6404. Uh, does anyone have any questions regarding numbers or anything like that?
What about our, what about our ICU beds?
From what we're hearing, they are still full. Anyone else? And I want to quickly add right quick that this month, the month of September, is National Preparedness Month. Uh, so make sure you're following us on Facebook and Twitter at G E C E M A. Uh, we're going to be posting some helpful tips and that sort of thing on there. So everyone take at least uh one or two steps in becoming more prepared this month, and let's be mindful of that as we will have our secondary tornado season coming up uh soon this fall and winter. So now is the time to be prepared.
Okay. Are there any questions from EMA? Or EMA? All right, we thank you and Ms. Gaither both for your uh update and your information.
Dr. Toles, I have one.
Oh, okay.
Is the uh, what is the percentage of the Delta variant now? Do we have it?
I don't. Um, I can look further into that and give the percentage of Delta variant. Oh, I know, okay. But we'll look further into that for you.
Okay, because I know once it was 94%, 95%, so I just want to see if it came down. Thanks.
We will get that for you.
Thank you.
All right, we, this time, we thank you again, and at this time, we'll have our update from Chief Reed.
Good morning, Dr. Toles. Good morning, council. Uh, this week I do have a slight bit of good news. We're down from seven positive firefighters to four positive currently. We have three out on exposure to COVID, and one is still out with a child that has COVID. So that is, while I still don't like any of my employees to be out with COVID, that's encouraging. We ran 21 persons under investigation last week. That's down slightly. We'll see where the curve goes on that from here. Um, our PPE is holding good. We're still following all of our CDC protocols and guidelines, and I'm open to any questions.
Are there any questions for the chief? Uh, we thank you again, and as we uh will continue with our agenda.
Thank you, ma'am.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in the city council meeting held on September the 7th.
So move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of September the 3rd through the 9th.
So move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Today, we have a joint uh proclamation from the mayor and city council that I would like to read. Uh, from the city of Gaston, Alabama. Whereas Barbara Owen Reed was born in Gaston and was a graduate of Gaston High School. She graduated from Brea, Brea College, where she was a member of Alpha Gamma Delta. She was an educator and beloved piano teacher to many students and taught at Mitchell Elementary School. Barbara went on to become a librarian, working for years in the reference department at the Gaston Public Library, and retired from the city of Gaston with over 20 years of service. And whereas Barbara Reed was an active and supportive member of our community, she was a life member of the Parent Teachers Association, a member of the Alabama City Historical Association, and Bellevue Baptist Church, and a frequent visitor at First Baptist, uh First United Methodist Church of Gaston. And whereas Barbara devoted many hours to volunteer at the Gaston Museum of Art, she was a steadfast and a dedicated volunteer from heaven to clean and preserve objects from the museum's exhibit and collection to assist with hosting museum events. And whereas Barbara has obtained extensive knowledge about our city, its history, and was always willing to share information and ideas with anyone who endeavor to preserve and cherish our history and artifacts. And whereas Barbara was dedicated to her family, raising two sons, Ben and Scott, and enjoying her entire extended family, including her grandchildren and great-grandchildren, she excelled in her supportive role for her husband Ben Reed and his service on the Gaston City Council. Now therefore, I Sherman Guyton, Mayor of the city of Gaston, Alabama hereby join with the Gaston City Council in expressing our gratitude and appreciation for Barbara's extraordinary and outstanding service to our city and its citizens by proclaiming Tuesday, September 14th, 2021, as Barbara Reed Day in the city of Gaston. Approve and present this 14th day of September the 20th, 21. At this time, I call on Mayor Sherman Guyton for any remarks he has in regards to the joint proclamation.
Thank you. I uh have many things to say about Barbara Reed. And uh she had decades of service to the city of Gaston and its residents. She was an educator and continued to guide people and improve the city through her work at the Gaston Public Library, the Gaston Museum of Art, and numerous volunteer boards and organizations. Barbara was also a devoted wife who worked tirelessly to keep Ben in line, which is a full-time job by itself. If you knew Barbara, you know she cared deeply about Gaston and all of our people. And we surely will be missing her, and we have our prayers for Ben's family as well. And we, we just miss this friend and great city. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam President, what an honor it is for her. Thank you.
We are very happy to do it. We're not going to unfinished business. We have an ordinance adopting the American Rescue Plan Fund budget. And this ordinance was presented last week for first reading, and it approved the budget for the 24,000, 24,042,734 dollars in American Rescue Plan funds allotted to the city. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So move.
Is there any discussion?
Uh, Madam President, I don't have any objections or anything, but I have gotten several questions, and I just want to ask if Lisa Rossar can clarify one thing for me, but she's, she's on. Um, so it's my understanding there's basically three things that we've done. Number one is we changed the base pay by eliminating five steps and adding three to the top so that people will higher in at a higher base pay. And then we have bonuses, the $3,000 bonuses for full-time employees and 1,500 for part-time. But then the third component of that is the actual step raises for employees. So my question is, in addition to those two, first two items, are there, there are step raises included in our budget? And if so, do those include Police Department, Fire, EMA, EMS, et cetera? And are they included also in the $3,000 bonuses? Can you clarify that, Lisa?
Um, yes, sir, I can, but there again, what you've got in front of you right now is concerning the ARP. Your question is concerning the general fund, so do you want me to answer at this point?
Yeah, I really was just trying to clarify because I know we had the ordinance, and then we had the ARP, and then we have the general budget, and all of those have some component of personnel compensation. I just wanted to clarify
Okay.
that whole picture.
Okay, I'd be more than glad to. So so in the ARP funds that you have before you, the only thing that is coming out of the ARP funds that is concerning personnel is the bonus of what we're calling, it's not really a bonus, it's called premium pay for city employees. So to qualify for these fundings under ARP, you have to either be police and fire, EMA, a garbage truck driver, a transit driver, or janitorial. That's the only groups of people that qualify for this funding under ARP funds. Um, you also had to make, we also had to make sure that those people made under a threshold of 46,840 dollars. So all of those people do not qualify for ARP funds because they make over 46,840 dollars. So um, so what we did is there were 169 employees, basically or roughly, that will be paid out of the ARP funding. So the other city employees, and there's basically about 324 other employees that will qualify for this premium pay, they will be being paid the same amount out of our general fund, which is coming up next. Um, so um, the, the amount is the same regardless if it's ARP or regardless if it's general fund. It's $3,000 for a full-time employee, and it's $1,500 for a non-full-time employee. Now, there again, this is for work time during COVID-19 of last fiscal year. So it involves the pay period, which was the last pay period of the end of July. We chose that pay period because it was one of our largest um weeks of, of having employees out with COVID, having COVID or affected by COVID. So if you were working, if you received a check in July, the end of July of last fiscal year, and you have remained an employee with the city of Gaston until this check will be dispersed, which will hopefully be in October, you will qualify for the premium pay. Okay, so that's first element. Does that make that clear, Mr. Wilson, or do I need to clarify?
Yeah, that's a great description.
Okay, so the other two elements, both of those are in our general fund involving personnel. Has nothing to do with ARP funds. As you stated, the pay plan was changed, and y'all voted on that last week. So that's already been approved. The other thing is, yes, there is step increases for all seating employees. That's all seating employees, full-time, full-time seating employees, because that's, only full-time employees are on the state, on the step plan. If you make $25,000 or below, you're going to get a four-step or a 5% increase. If you make above $25,000, then you are going to only get a two-step, which is a 2.5% increase. And with us extending the pay plan out, that allowed us to give all seating employees a step increase. So yes, that does include police and fire, because they are general fund departments.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. That's all the discussion I have, Madam President.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Tolls?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Our next item, this is the time and place, as advertised, to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2022 budget. This ordinance approved the following budgets. The general fund budget is $53,245,745. Special revenue, special revenue funds is $8,227,482. Our debt service fund is $8,771,604. Our enterprise and internal service fund is $13,351,999. Our capital project fund is $8,100,000. And our capital fund two is $7,200,000. The proposed general fund budget provides that all employees on the pay plan making under $25,000 per year shall receive a four-step increase, which is 5%, and those making over $25,000 per year shall receive a two-step increase, which is 2.5%. Is there anyone who would like to speak in regards to the budget? Mr. Rogers, is there anyone that has come on that want to speak in for or against at this time? This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Our next item is our next public hearing is a resolution ordering a abatement of nuisance on property located at 313 Greatest Street in District 6, the state of Alabama, right of redemption of Howard Nelson and Thessa Nelson, if deceased, if their heirs is deceased, and Talion Wilson being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? And I believe, council members, you have the pictures in your folder. Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Yes, Madam President. We started this case, filed it in April of last year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits. We're asking today for a resolution to be passed to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
He showed up just a moment ago.
I know. I saw him just a moment ago. We'll give him just a minute in case he's got a bad connection. Councilwoman Tolls, I'll go ahead and record your vote.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, since I don't see him, motion carries to adopt.
All right, our next public hearing is a resolution authoring abatement of nuisance on property located at 5 Marston Avenue in District 6. And this is Juan Diego Ray and Jay and Misty Holcomb being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Yes, Madam President. You received in my recommendation memo to Iva. And also, you've received pictures. I would ask you to, and draw your attention to those pictures. This house is over 100 years old. The owner has obviously installed a new roof and new windows. He has done significant work on the inside, although we asked him to focus on the outside. He said he would do that in the next couple of weeks. So I'm going to ask that this case be tabled for 30 days. Thank you.
All right. What is the pleasure of the council?
I'm making motion. We table this for 30 days, please.
Second.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Tolls?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Ms. Iva, I received a message from him that he's attempting to rejoin with a separate device.
Okay.
So.
All righty. I will still keep calling on him in case he's able to get back with us. Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Our next final public hearing is a resolution authoring abatement of nuisance on property at 511 Wilson Street in District 6, state of Alabama, subject to the right of redemptions of Evelyn McHarder, or her heir or deceased being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone want to speak in favor?
Yes, Madam President. We filed this case in December of last year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance. Thank you.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson, I mean, I'm sorry, Councilman Williams is still trying to reconnect with us. Councilwoman Tolls?
Yes.
All right, motion carries to adopt.
All right, our next item is a resolution authorizing a lease agreement with Mental Health America of Edgewark County. And this is for office space on the second floor of the Gaston Public Library, and the amount is $100 per month for a period of one year, with the option to renew for five additional years. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams, just in case? Councilwoman Tolls?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is authorizing a permit agreement with Alabama Department of Transportation. And this is for the modification, operation, and maintenance of the traffic signal at the Alabama Highway 77 and the Transport Street intersection. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Tolls?
Yes.
Councilman Williams? Okay, I think he's still working. Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is authorizing a non-transferable lakeshore permit with Alabama Power. And this is required for bank stabilization along the River Walk at Couso Landing. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Second.
Second.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams, just in case? I don't think we have him with us yet. Councilwoman Tolls?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is authorizing agreement with Ralph House, and this is for the 10-bed units for the city prisoners to participate in the treatment program, and the amount is $1,666.67 per month. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Tolls?
Yes.
Councilman Williams? Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Our final resolution is amending a resolution number R43-04 regarding the pay plan and the resolution number R463-04 regarding job classification. This adds the job classification of environmental service clerk, secretary to the clerk's office, property housing code inspector, construction inspector, deputy director, sports complex manager, and assistant golf pro. It also changes the pay range of the campground manager job classification. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Tolls?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
New business? Do we have new business?
I have one, Madam President. This is requested by the museum, and it comes in the form of a resolution renaming the second floor art gallery at the Gaston Museum of Art for Ms. Barbara Reed. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Tolls?
Yes.
Councilman Williams? I think you may have dropped out again. Oh, okay, great. Thank you. Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Unanimous consent has been given for consideration under new business.
A move for adoption.
Second.
Second.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Tolls?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
I'm sorry.
At this time, before we
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I think I need to read this resolution. So if I could do that, please, ma'am?
Yes.
All right, this is, resolution has not been numbered, but it's number R-21, renaming the second floor art gallery at the Gaston Museum of Art. Whereas Barbara Reed was a dedicated volunteer with over 15 years of service to the Gaston Museum of Art. She helped the museum in so many areas, including preserving the collection and making it accessible to others, cleaning the large and small optics from the museum exhibits, and helping to run museum events. The Gaston Museum of Art will forever be grateful for the service of this amazing woman. And whereas the time and knowledge Barbara dedicated to this community was overwhelming, she brought ideas, positive energy, and a beautiful intensity, while forever opting to forego the credit and accolades she so deserved. And whereas the city council of the city of Gaston desires to designate in honor of Barbara Reed, the second floor art gallery as Barbara Reed Gallery. And now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Gaston, Alabama, that in honor of Barbara Reed and her dedication to the Gaston Museum of Art, the second floor gallery shall be known as Barbara Reed Gallery. I hereby certify that this resolution was duly adopted by the city council of the city of Gaston, Alabama, at a meeting held on September 14th, 2021, and that will be signed by city clerk, Iva Nelson. Thank you so much.
And also, Dr. Tolls, I apologize for breaking in. I believe Ray Wetzel is here, if you would like to have him speak now.
Yeah, at this time, I'm calling on him to give remarks.
Hey, when I took over as director of the museum, there was a lot to do. And anytime I had a question, everybody just said, you need to contact Barbara Reed. She may have not always liked or understood what I was doing, but she always had a spirited debate. And she always, you know, like, put the time and effort into finding out what I was trying to do. And I really hope I earned her respect. She has always supported the museum, and she is a tremendous, tremendous asset to the community, and she will be missed. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any department reports? Committee reports? Any board reports? Okay, we have a citizen request from Kevin Blackwell from the SPAN program. You're on, Mr. Blackwell.
Here we go. It took me a second to get on. This technology is so difficult sometimes. I just wanted to make sure everybody on the council received the invitation for our 40th anniversary this Saturday. And I hope all of you are aware that Edgewark County And I hope all of you are aware that the Edgewall County SPAN Program's been in Gaston for 40 years. That is an extremely long time. We were again the first program in the state. There are six other SPAN programs working in the state of Alabama. So I hope that y'all get a chance to attend this Saturday at the venue, starting at 6:00. And we'll eat at 6:30. And that is, uh, hopefully have a good time. We'll have some speakers. We'll have a, it'll be a really good chance to get a lot of information and say some of the things we've done with some of the kids in the past.
Thank you, and we'd just like to thank you for what we, what you do. We know what the, uh, SPAN program does for the city and also for the young people that attend the program. So we really do appreciate what you do and how the program, and for lasting for 40 years, that is a long time for a program to last that's benefiting the young people in our city. So we thank you.
I want to say this real quick. You know, last year, or last fiscal year, we only had a chance to serve 56 kids because COVID affected everybody, even our program. And, uh, we were, there was a time we didn't get a chance to enroll anybody. But this fiscal year, a lot of it is due to COVID and kids getting behind. And we've served 116 kids so far. We sent 36 kids back in their right grade during the summertime that otherwise would have failed. So there's a lot, there's a lot going on in our program.
That is good, and we do appreciate what you're, what you're doing. Uh, because you all are, you know, a lot of people, or I would just say, a lot of people, a lot of politicians who run for office, they always say, uh, "Let's do this for the kids," and you never see them again after the election is over. So we just appreciate what you do for our young people, and thank you. Uh, at this time, we'll have, uh, remarks by, uh, our council and, uh, our, our mayor. Uh, Mr. Back, Councilman Back, would you like to go first, please?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Uh, want to echo to your comments, uh, Madam President, about the SPAN program. You know, there's a story about a, a man walking along a shoreline, and he's throwing, there's thousands of starfish washed up on shore, and he's throwing them back one at a time. And somebody asked him, like, "Why are you doing that for? You're wasting your time." It, it doesn't matter. He picked up another one and threw it back in the ocean and said, "Well, it mattered to that one." And not to compare a starfish to a human being, but I think SPAN for 40 years is, is reaching those students and those young citizens of our town and our city that are sometimes forgotten. And to hear the numbers like 36 kids that were turned back around, that's 36 young people, that's 36 families, that's 36 futures. And, uh, and, you know, we see Kevin once a year, and, and that's probably not enough to, to see Kevin. But thank you, Kevin, for what you do and the entire SPAN program and all the people that volunteer and help. That's, that's, that's hard work. That's frontline, dirty work, uh, that you don't seem to get a lot of credit for. So they don't do it for the credit. They do it because they love those kids and those families. And they are totally and wholly devoted to, to serve in not only those families, but our community. That's, there's no telling where those kids would be if it wasn't for the SPAN program over the last 40 years. So, so thank you very much. Uh, want to move on to COVID. Uh, we heard in the report, our CCU rooms are, are full. I have, uh, a friend in healthcare here locally that has told me very sadly that there's going to be a lot of deaths in Edgewall County in the next two weeks. Uh, the percentage of people that leave the CCU, once they get on a rest, uh, ventilator, is not very good. Very, very few, very few come off the ventilator. And a lot of those that are on the ventilator have not been vaccinated. And then a lot of those that haven't been vaccinated, they and their families, some of their last wishes are for everybody to be vaccinated. So I just, you know, I just want those voices to be heard. I get and understand this is very political. Everything we do today is political. You can't say Rottweiler War Eagle without it meaning something different today than it did maybe 12 months ago. So I think we all understand that, but, but listen to the voices that are, that are on the front lines. Listen to your healthcare workers, nurses, and the, and the people that are on the front lines, the, the doctors that are holding up, uh, iPads and cell phones so, uh, patients can have a, a last goodbye to their family that's not allowed to be in that room with their dying family member. This is serious stuff. There, it, it, there's no time for politics. It's time for common sense. It's time for thinking about others. And, uh, we, we have to do what's best for us. I've said it every Tuesday, and I'll say it again. Don't take my word for it. Take, call your doctor, talk to your pharmacist, and then make, and then make your decision. Uh, transfer over to the library, to the mental health, uh, ordinance that we just passed. Uh, you've heard us say here in this council that our homeless population has more than doubled in the last two years. In a four-county area, there's only two shelters. It's the Love Center and the Salvation Army. They're both in the city of Gaston. So we've become a magnet for homeless people. You can see it. If you live downtown, if you work or, uh, eat downtown, you're seeing people you've never seen before. They are coming to our, our, our city. Uh, a lot of them wind up at the library. And so there's some big challenges over there. So I commend the mental health partnership with our library. I commend Craig Scott, uh, for initiating this type of a partnership. Craig is always on the front line. Craig is always doing things that need to be done. And he's the guy that steps up and, and gets it done. So thank you, Craig Scott. Thank you and your staff and to the mental health department. I, I hope this is going to help, uh, in a lot of ways, to help those individuals that need mental health, uh, assistance and to help our library and our, and our staff. Uh, you know, I just read a, a resolution about Barbara Reed. And it's kind of, uh, it's kind of hard to get through it. Uh, I didn't know Barbara for 40 years. I probably knew Barbara for maybe 10 years and really got to know her since I was elected to this council. And, uh, just an, uh, unbelievable, outstanding lady, uh, that really loved her community, served us well, loved her husband, served him well. And what a partnership Ben and Barbara had for many, many decades. And so Ben, buddy, uh, I love you. And, uh, told you that Saturday at the memorial, uh, for 9/11, so I get to tell you a second time. But, uh, I love you. I love you, family, and, uh, praying for you guys and, uh, for the days and weeks to come. And some of this dies down, and then that's, that's when, that's when things are tough. So, uh, and then last but not least, speaking of wives, my wife today turned 60 years old. Today is Kim Back's 60th birthday, so want to give her...
She wants you to tell that?
Well, I, I, I think so. It's, she, she put it on Facebook, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna blame her, so.
Okay.
She's, uh, this is her 38th year to teach kindergarten in the city of Gaston. She just turned 60. Uh, uh, as you can see behind me, there's my kicking shoes, uh, from my high school and college days. So when I say I outkicked my punt coverage, it's a true statement. You hear that a lot of time from people that, from guys that weren't actual kickers. I was a kicker. I outkicked my punt coverage. So thank you so much. Love you, Kim, and, uh, uh, just have a great day. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Cannon?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say that I'm proud to be a friend with Ben Reed and Barbara. Uh, she was a fascinating woman. She took care of Ben all of her life, and I know that was a chore. And Ben took care of her all her life. They were just a terrific couple, and she really did a lot for this city that went unknown. A lot of people don't know all the stuff she did, but she did a lot of stuff for this city, and she will be missed. Uh, I do want to say in the year 1959, I think it was about 605, at, uh, the Baptist, Old Baptist Hospital, there was a son born to John Arthur Leroy Cannon and Hilda Imogen Cannon, and that son was me, Johnny Eugene Cannon. And I'd just like to say, uh, that's what I go by. I don't go by any titles, councilman, none of that stuff. None of my friends call me councilman, and I don't even like to be called councilman. I'm just plain Johnny Cannon. I've got nicknames, and that's all I want to be called. I don't want no special recognition for being a councilman, because this job is not special. This job is an elected job, and your friends vote you in, they help you get elected. And I just wanted to say that. Don't call me councilman. Just call me Johnny, call me the garbage man, which I used to be for 25 years. Just call me anything, but don't call me councilman. And the next thing, I want to turn our thoughts to the city of Gaston. Uh, the way our streets look, our city looks, it's just nasty all over. I was going by the other day in a street in District 6, and I seen a lady. She'd thrown some brush out there on the side of the road. Here comes the garbage she threw out there, a handful of garbage. The brush department don't pick up garbage. They pick up brush and stuff on the side of the road. They don't pick up the garbage out of the garbage can. I forgot how many people don't even have a garbage can in the city of Gaston. The people that has garbage cans, most of them don't pay anymore. And we've got to, got to grip, get a grip on that so we can get the people to pay it. If we come out and get your can for non-payment, and we have to send a guy out to get it, he takes it all the way to the transfer station, he washes that can up and gets it ready. And you come in the next day and pay your garbage bill. We charge you $25 for that man's time. He's made two trips to your house, washed the can, and we charge him, we charge you $25 for that. I'm going to see if we can't get something going. We can raise the fee on that, where people will keep their garbage can. They won't want to, for $25, let it go back and wait a while and pay and throw the trash on the street. We've just got to figure out a way that our, our budget doesn't have to subsidize our garbage department. And there's got to be a way we can figure that out and get these people to putting the garbage in the garbage can and not throwing the garbage on the side of the streets. We can do better than we're doing, guys. I don't know what all it's going to take, but in the next couple of weeks, I'm going to try to figure out some stuff on my own. If it takes getting a campaign together, and we go out in our district and give people letters or whatever we need to do, uh, little flyers about it, trying to keep your city clean. We've got to do something. People don't want to come into this city and to a dirty city. Nobody wants to. I asked a guy today, a gentleman today at City Hall, if he knows another nastier city than Gaston. He thought about it for a minute, and he gave me one more, one more city that he knew of was, is nastiest Gaston. We have got to get our thoughts to cleaning up our city, putting the garbage in the garbage can, and the people that's coming from out of town that's bringing their brush and their trash and their roofing in here, just dumping it on the side of the road. We've got to figure out who these people are. If the neighbors are called, get a, a tag number. We'll turn it over to the police because we don't need other people bringing our trash into the city of Gaston. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Wilson? You on mute?
Um, I, I don't really have anything to add, other than I'll say this about the, the name thing. Again, I've learned from everybody on this council. I learned from Councilman Cannon. I learned from, uh, Madam President Toles. I've learned from the mayor. I've learned a lot about how to be a public official. And I've sat here and watched, eh, eh, many members of this council criticize citizens for referring to members of this council by their first name. And I just want us to be, uh, consistent in our application of that. That's, I, it doesn't bother me. You can call me anything you want to. But if we're going to hold the citizens to that standard inside the, the council format, then I think we should hold it one another to that same standard too. But again, I'm, I'm fine with being called Jason or anything you want to call me. If you, if you've got a problem with me, I promise you it's one-sided, because I don't care. Thank you, Madam President. That's all I have.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. I really don't have anything. I'm just quite ready to adjourn today.
Councilman, uh, thank you. Councilman Worthy?
Yes, ma'am, Madam President. First, I'm going to give an announcement here. Um, the hosted by Drake Kirkpatrick, uh, 21 Kids, Drake Kirkpatrick 21 Kids Foundation. It's going to be a vaccination clinic at, uh, Jasmine Lopez Agency, right there on Forest Avenue, uh, Eighth and Forest Avenue, across from the jail. It'll be on, uh, September the 18th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And they'll be giving out, uh, tacos. And, uh, we got, also had one there on August 21st. So the people that took the first shot then will be able to take their second shot, uh, on this go-around on September 18th. And if you haven't taken your first shot, you can come and, uh, take your first shot. So, uh, it's open up to anybody that would like to come. And also, I want to say thank you to the, uh, Drake Kirkpatrick 21 Kids and, uh, to my wife, uh, to Mr. Wayne Rowe, and to, uh, physicians, apothecary. Uh, we was over at Elliot on Sunday. We, uh, fed 69 people and gave out 11 shots. Physicians, apothecary, uh, did the shots. So, uh, we will have another one there when it's time for them, because it was the Moderna shot. So I think in 28 days, we'll have another one there for them to, uh, get their second shot. So I just want to say thank you, uh, to the city for letting us hold it there at Elliot. And those people, uh, they were very appreciative. And, and, and we just got to find a way to do more for our less fortunate here in this city. We, we, we definitely got to find a way because, uh, and some of the people there that, uh, maybe on drugs or whatever, they were, won't help right then. But we don't have a facility here where you can send them to right, right then. But when, when they decide they won't help, that's when we need somebody there to say, "Hey, you can go to such and such place and receive treatment." Because if they wait, then they change their mind, you know? So we, we just got to do better as a city. We, we call ourselves the City of Champions, and I know we have a lot of different problems, but the, the, uh, homeless problem, we, we could help tackle that better than what we're doing. So thank you.
Councilman Reed?
Yes, I'm not able to say too much at the present time, but maybe later. Tag them, y'all. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to make a comment or two about the budget. Uh, I support the general fund budget that's presented at the September 7th meeting. The general fund budget allows us to increase the starting pay for employees along with giving employees raises to keep up with the increasing costs. We have nearly a $4.5 million in street improvements planned, including continued construction on the South 11th Street. In addition to numerous other items, we'll also be able to retire two bond issues, which is money we won't have to pay again. By fully making use of the resources available to us, the city continues to be financially responsible while providing the best services for our citizens. And I want to congratulate Lisa Ross and all her folks that, uh, did the budget. And I appreciate the council going along with everything, because I think it's really, considering the way everything is, a really good budget. Thank you.
Uh, I would just like to say that I'd like to thank all the councilmen, uh, for all the input that is done. We live in a society that is a democracy, where everybody has, uh, votes, everybody has their opinion, and they can just, uh, voice their opinion. We are not creations of Jimmy Henson. And so therefore, we have that right to exercise and follow the procedures. So I just want to thank you, uh, gentlemen, for your input, for all that you've done, contrary to what, uh, they may put on Facebook, uh, YouTube, or whatever they may say about the Gaston City Council. Uh, we know what we're doing. We're acting according to the way that we should. We have that right to agree and to disagree. And so again, I thank you. Uh, we were created by the divine creator. And if you all don't know who Jimmy Henson is, I will tell you. We were not created to be muppets, to be dangled by any string, by anybody else. And so at this time, I ask for a motion to adjourn.